Does everyone have a chance to look at all the minutes from last meeting? If so, any corrections or additions to that? If not, make a motion to accept it. Larry, second?
Second.
Lauren, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, anyone have any additions or corrections to this agenda? Need a motion to accept this agenda?
Go move.
Lauren, second bubba? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we'll just start out with more engineering right away. Appreciate that.
So, bid the street project on Thursday. You guys should be happy to know we got great bids on street projects. About 230,000 underestimated, so. The reason for that was we were estimating what 90 bucks a ton for asphalt. That's pretty common going rate right now this year. Asphalt fluctuates a lot. The low bidder for the project is border states. Their asphalt price is 75 dollars a ton. So you got a great asphalt price. I have several documents in this agenda. The first document after the cover page is a bid tabulation. These are the totals. And the next one is the detailed bid tabs. So we got five bidders on the project. Border States, Knights River, Batuminas, Strata. Central Specialties were the five places. Border States is the low. They are the local guys, so we're happy that they were the low bidders. One reason they're competitive too is they're 45 miles away. So they will just haul asphalt directly from their plants to here when they're paving. They won't have to mold a plant in. And you're talking 100,000 just to mold that plant in. So they don't have to do that. So that's why they were probably able to get the bid here. We did bid the project, so we had two base bid options, which are your streets here. All these streets. And we bid a cement stabilized base versus a traditional aggregate section. So the cement stabilized base, they've stabilized the base and paved right on top of that. The aggregate section is a more traditional section where they'll grind the streets up, mix gravel in, use the gravel underneath the asphalt and pave on top of that. So we were actually anticipating the cement stabilized base to be the cheaper alternative. But the gravel section was actually a little bit cheaper when we bid. So that is good. It's a little bit beefier of a section, so I was happy to see that. So if you guys are gonna move forward with the project, you can pick either the base bid option one, which is a cement stabilized base, or base bid option two, which is the aggregate base. So the aggregate base is about 50,000 cheaper than doing it with the cement stabilized base.
Oh, I see. And that's actually a better?
It's a little bit beefier of a section. The cement stabilized base is newer. There's no aggregate base underneath it. So now we'll have a six inch aggregate base and paving on top of that. So they're both, they're both good sections. I like the aggregate a little bit more. Gives you a little bit more flexibility in the winter if things are moving a little bit. You have a little bit more, you know, get things that blow up, so.
Something I asked you too about that cement stabilization, you know, if we do ever have a water break, you know, how hard would that be to dig that up?
You can cut through them. So they can, we just had that in McCloskey, they had it.
Oh, they did?
Yep. They ripped through it pretty, they came out in chunks, but it wasn't big. They had to cut it to get it out of it, so. We also have two alternates. The first one was chip ceilings, the rest of the blocks in town. And then we had an alternate for additional patching throughout the remainder of town. So the last estimate we brought you guys was 2.1 million. And then we added in that extra patching in there too, which brings it to 2.2. So where we're at with our project with these new bids, total project cost of about 2 million. Now that does include 150,000 in contingencies too. So that's included in the project for if something would come up, the city would wanna add something or you run into a construction problem. That's included in that cost too. If you don't use it, you don't have, I mean, it's really your money to spend out of will here in the project. So we could end up being about 1.85 and we're said done if we don't end up using those contingencies.
So that's 600,000 difference. That's your guys' fees?
There's 150,000 in contingencies. Yep, you've got, so you have an earlier statement of cost. So there's contingencies in there, there's admin and publishing, there's bond discounts, bond council, there's legal, the geotechnical cores are in there. So there's engineering fees and then there's the other costs in there too. So no, it's not all engineering fees in there.
Right.
Yep. So we, I mean, we could be on my budget and we're said done. So I've got bid tabs in here. There's a recommendation to award a contract to border states in here too. And then there's engineer statement of cost in here also that has the breakdown of all the costs. So at this point, if you guys are comfortable with the bids, I would recommend that you award a contract to border states. And your decision tonight would be if you wanna do either the, one of the two base bids and then if you wanna do any of the alternates to your guys' decision tonight.
So when you said, because I showed this down, so you said that asphalt is at 75?
Yep.
So just looking at how this shit fluctuates like you were saying, and you were seeing it fluctuates a lot, so is that locked in at 75?
Locked in at 75. So they, they lock all their prices in. Their contract with you is at that 75 dollars a ton. A couple of years ago, we were bidding asphalt up to 120 a ton. So it's, it has gone down a lot. It is extremely market driven with oil. And then the other, the other thing is how much work these contractors have. So last year, we were seeing all 100 dollars a ton asphalt. Contractors were busy from the previous year. We bid this at a perfect time because none of the DOT bid lettings had happened yet. So contractors are still hungry, they're looking for work. So they're trying to get their first few jobs locked up. So they were, they were competitive. They were, they were hungry, so. It worked out nicely in your guys' favor. We were very happy to see 75.
I personally like the aggregate option with, and keep the two alternates, the seal code and the patching. And that puts us right at 2 million worst case scenario, I think, right over where we wanna be.
Yeah, that's cool.
Yep.
I know we're under 200, but I was talking to Tom, I didn't realize we were up to 2.2 already, you know, with all that other stuff. So that puts us right at that 2 we're shooting for, I guess.
Yeah, and you've got, you've got a healthy contingency. So typically, we like to run at 10%, you know, before we bid at contingencies. Just to make it even 2, I was a little bit higher than that. So you got 150,000. Makes it easier with the financing company.
So if we do move forward?
There are 152,000 contingencies too.
Okay, so we get towards the end of the project and nothing's going wrong, we're going good? Then we can look at adding?
Yep, so that's your money, right? You can, you can spend it or you can, you cannot spend it. So if you don't use them, your project, you're coming about 1.85. If there are additional patching areas that you guys wanna look at patching, we could certainly, we change order of those into the project. So we could, we could do all the blocks that we're looking at. We could get all the patches that we're looking at done. And then if there's more stuff you guys wanna do, you can use that money then. I would like to wait towards the end to make sure nothing else would come up. You know, anytime you're doing construction, there's things that happen or change or, you know, unforeseen things you find under the ground. But certainly, we could, we could add in additional patching.
And you also?
We would have to negotiate a price for that. The contractor's likely to hold his price on patching if you do go over the contract amount. But if we're adding in, we'd have to negotiate with them to make sure you guys remember both of them the same.
And you had mentioned earlier today that we could possibly use that next year also?
Yes.
So we're not, I mean, we could go through one more winter and see what, we might have more spots next spring?
Yeah, so, so we just, we're estimating a patching amount. You know, we, we talked about a dollar amount of patching to add in. So there's, there's potential you may wanna do more than what we have in the budget for this year with some of those contingencies. Or you may be fine with where we're at. But certainly, yes, next year, next year's when they come to chip seal everything. So they'll seal the cracks and they'll chip seal everything. So we wanna get the patches done before that. But certainly, we could, in the spring, we could add some of that patching in.
Okay, so that option's still there.
So that 150,000 in contingency, that's above the 100,000 alternate too, right?
Yes, so, correct. So the 1.1 million 392,000, 214, that's your construction agreement is what that dollar amount will be. And your total project cost right now is at 2 million. So the 150,000 is included in the total project cost, but it's not above the 2 million. So this is the statement of cost. If you guys page through and have to break down everything. It's about here, get paid in. And the contingencies are the last line item above the 2 million. So, and we might be under on some of the other stuff. You know, there's other items that we could be under on, so. We're sitting good. Very happy with the bids.
Do you guys got any questions for him or do you wanna refer to discuss? Or should we move into motion to accept it? Do you have any questions?
If you guys accept and decide to award a contract to border states, our next step is we will put the contracts together, send them to border states. They'll add their documents that they need, get their signatures. They'll come back to the city. Your attorney should look at it and make sure you're okay with things. And the city will sign the contracts and then send them back to border states. And you'll keep a copy and we'll keep a copy in our file. That's how the next step works, but.
I guess I'll make a motion that we accept the bid from border states with option two and alternates one and two.
Okay, Lauren, the second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So there is, we should, there's a notice of award letter in here too. So we should sign that and give it to border states. And what that will do is that will, they'll be able to give that to their suppliers. They can lock their oil price in. They asked for that, so oil's fluctuating a lot, like I said. So they just wanna get that to their suppliers and their boss, know they're moving forward.
Second to your last page.
Notice of award. And then we'll put the contracts together, send it to border states. Like I said, they'll sign, you guys will sign. And then you'll sign what's called a notice to proceed after the contracts are signed. And then the contractor will start moving forward. We'll have a pre-construction meeting prior to construction starting. I talked to Luke at border states. What their plan is, so they're gonna come in, they'll grind the streets up, grind existing asphalt up. They'll start prepping the roadways underneath, you know, the base underneath. Get the gravel section, get the fabric in, the gravel section in. And then what their plan is, when they get three, four, or five blocks ready, they're gonna come in, is what he told me, and they're gonna pave those three, four, five blocks. They probably won't put the top course on the asphalt, but they'll put the base course on just to get it protected. What he's worried about is if one of these other guys would've got the bid, what they would've done is they grind, ground everything up, get everything prepped, ready to pave. Then move their asphalt plant in and pave everything at once. He's worried if they're prepping and they get a big rainstorm or something, that he's gonna lose his base. So it's gonna hopefully work out nicely that he's molding three, four, five times, you know, depending on how fast they get things ready and how, how good the spring is. If it stays dry, he was thinking he'd probably start early spring. If it, if it's a wetter spring, they'll probably wait till June or July to get started. But he's, they're happy with the bids, so they're excited to move forward.
Maybe I missed that, but what was the kinda estimated time of, like, that he kinda thought it was gonna?
I did, I did get that. He said if everything, it depends. His concrete sub is three or four weeks of work for his concrete. And he's thinking 10 to 11 weeks of his work. So it depends if some of this is happening concurrently or if some of it's, you know, spread out. So 12 to 14 weeks on the high end is what they're thinking. If they get good weather, the week probably shaved off that. And if, you know, if they can be doing some of their work, well, the concrete guys are doing work, that'll, that'll shave a little time too, so. But we, I think, what is our completion date? End of, or, completion date in front of the school is August 4th for this block right here on Elm. And the rest of it, I think, was, you know, from Main Street to the school. And the rest of it was a month after that, I believe, is what we had, so. So now we do need to close the loan with Coilers. So now that you guys have selected an option, I'll call Mike Mastrom tomorrow and then he'll move forward to getting that loan finalized. There'll be some documents the city needs to sign for that. So at that point, we do have some invoices for you guys that have been waiting. So we'd ask you to pay those, you know, once the loan is closed, but we're fine holding until, till that's done. I do have an engineering invoice for you guys. It's for remainder of our final design and bidding process. It's for 27,500. And you can approve that whenever your loan is closed, but we just need to keep invoicing you as we go.
Okay, we don't need a motion tonight, then?
You don't have to, no. We don't have the funds to pay anything right now, so. So we'll need to put the contracts together, set up, we need to set up a pre-construction meeting. Contractor will be here. I wanna wait a little bit closer till we get to construction, so he's got some dates, you know, when he'll move into town and give us a more firm schedule. We do need to move forward with an assessment committee. So I don't know if you guys have selected or talked about who you're gonna have the assessment committee. I'd ask that you guys would appoint those if you can, so we can start meeting with the assessment committee, get the assessments put together, get them finalized, get them published, bring them back to the council, get council approval, and then get them to the county. So if we get the assessments completed and to the county this year, we will be, we'll have time to make our first payment to the bond company and then we won't have to pay any interim financing. So that'll save you 15,000, 20,000 if we get those assessments done this year. So I, that is a push to probably get those, get work on those as soon as possible. Okay? So we can do that now if you want.
Yeah, I guess, I, I talked to Joe Bardell, Joel Zinker, and Jeff Reiser. And they agreed to become the assessment committee. I didn't get this letter till yesterday, I think it was, from Marlene?
Alex.
How do you guys feel? Can we have four? Or is there a number we need to have?
You know, I, I don't know if there's a max number on there. Your attorney would know that. Talk to your attorney. I know you need at least three better. I don't know if you could have more than that. So, I don't know how you could.
My only problem with even numbers on any sort of committee is you don't have any sort of tiebreaker. If you're deadlocked anymore.
I personally would like to see someone on there that doesn't wanna kill the project every time we turn a corner myself, but that's my thought. I'm feeling with that.
Okay, I didn't know if we wanted to consider her, she volunteered in her letter.
I saw that, yep.
And I wasn't aware of it when I was calling. I got denied by about 11 people, so.
Another pointless job, huh?
It's a funny job, yeah. I didn't shoot you in the last time.
Okay, so we need a motion for that then, to?
Approve those three?
Approve those three, yeah.
So moved.
Motion for Joe Bardell, Joel Zinker, and Jeff Reiser as the assessment committee, bubba's. A second on that?
Alex, second.
Larry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
If you give me their contact, we'll get all of them. We need to put some maps together, some numbers together, and we'll start meeting those. I'd say within the month.
Did you get Joe Bardell's number?
Yes, but I don't have it here.
Okay, well.
I, I don't need it tonight. I think I got his cell number.
Do you?
Okay, and I don't know.
Yeah, it's his cell that I got.
Okay, I'll just give it to you.
Okay.
Sounds good. So then, we'll move forward, set pre-con. Next month, I'm gonna have an engineering amendment for you. For, it's gonna be reduced design fees because we're not doing the whole project. So you did sign an agreement for the whole project earlier. That's our design bidding agreement was. But we redesigned less, so we're gonna reduce the design fees. And we did not have the construction agreement included in that last amendment. And the reason for that was we wanted to get a bid first, get timeframes from the contractor so we can put our budget together for the construction piece of it. That's still included in your cost estimate. It's always been there. The dollar amount's always been there. But we didn't have an official agreement with you guys for that piece. So it'll be an amendment that we'll be bringing next month. And I'll get it to you guys early so you can review it if you have questions. We'll go through that piece of it too. So part of our construction is hourly, not to exceed an amount. Some pieces are, some, but I'll go through all that stuff with you, so. So, things are good. We're, we're excited to get going. So if you guys have any other, that's all I have. If you guys have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Awesome, glad we got you to find that. Appreciate your help.
Yep.
Well, you guys have anything else?
No, we're heading to Manana.
Do you need this stuff?
Notice of award?
Yes. And that's just?
Okay.
Give me a copy of that.
For the bids?
Yeah.
Pull them out there.
Say to me if I need some stops.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, look at you, I didn't have to steal your pen. Thank you.
See you guys.
Alright, okay, drive you.
Gave me a large cheer, Ben.
Alright, so we'll move right in on, or do you guys have anything else to discuss on that? We're good? Okay, we'll move right into city maintenance then.
Let's see, we got garbage, and I start taking that to Jamestown now. We got the wireline fixed at the senior center. That went pretty well, I guess, considering the frost line and everything. We have an issue, or we kinda had an issue down at the wellhouse with the VFDs. Lauren and I called the guy today and we had to kind of reprogram it so that we're more, how do you explain that? We're running, we're more resistant, running out of pressure.
VFDs are what you call a sleep mode. And what it was doing, it wasn't going in, it was going into the sleep mode and it starts up. What was that, a five minute timer? The problem is, we're sensing the pressure down at the pump. And that line coming up to the tower, you know, there's all the takeoffs or, you know, like by the Lutheran church, it heads west, it heads east. So anytime somebody's using water in between the well or the pumping plant and the tower, that causes that pressure to fluctuate down there. And what we did, or what he programmed today, he took the sleep time out of it. So now it's gonna shut on at 60.
Yeah, it'll turn on at 60 and shut off at 70.
Yep. And it doesn't use that sleep time anymore. So we're gonna try that.
Okay.
I think it'll work a lot better.
Okay, so we got both VFDs set up.
Yep.
That way. And then we also got a program in there if we have to take the water tower down, clean it, whatever, maintenance or whatever. Still have a program in there where you run off the VFD. Where we're gonna keep enough pressure in the line to run off the VFD.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that does happen. I will say, the people, oh, like the last time we did it, Harry Prowse, or that corner up there. They seen more fluctuation in their water pressures, but I don't think there's a way to avoid that.
That's just when the tower's down, or that's?
When the tower's down, only when the tower's down.
Yeah, okay.
But at least they got water.
Tell them, tell them to wash it, so they're not all washing at the same time. Give them all time slots, this is your time to use your water.
Bill, was I waiting on a contract from Jamestown? I still haven't gotten anything.
You know, the last time I talked to him, he never said anything about a contract.
Do you have, can you give me a number and a name later? Because I have people asking questions, what can go in the trash, what can't? I have, I bring out what?
Everything that we're taking down to Weshick is what I was told. You know, it's like the batteries, the tires, wood, building materials, sheet rock.
See, I put all that on there and they were just, and I said, once we see the contract, if there's anything more, then we'll let them know. So I just don't know if we're looking for a contractor, or we just?
Yep, I'll get you, get you a number.
Okay.
Is the city responsible for anything as far as that water break, sidewalk and all that, or?
I, you know, as far as I'm concerned, no. Because it was on their end of it, is where the break was at. So we just, we'll talk to them and see what they?
Figure, they don't want us to senior center studios. We'll just stay in touch with them, I guess, to see.
I can call GD too and see what's huge, she's got the say.
I was in that fight before, it sucks, but it's your problem until the street, you know?
Yeah. We, I mean, we have helped people up in the past, but it gets.
It wells around a little time.
Yep. Okay, anything else, Bill?
Yep, that's it.
Alright. Thanks for the work this month again. Auditor?
Nothing for me, only thing, I gave you the tax, do you take work? That's all I have. You don't have to make decisions.
Yeah, that's on that new business, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, we'll move right into water sewer and policing, Taylor?
No.
Nothing? Jeff High's not here.
Oh, and he said no, he didn't have anything.
Okay. Garbage, airport, ambulance, and health, Larry?
Nothing.
Fire in parks, Lauren, do you have anything?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Old business, bill insurance, I think we took care of that.
Yep.
New permit for Levi Guthmiller?
We took care of that.
Liquor license is done. New permit format, oh, we gotta just draw that up and, that's what you're working on.
That's what I'm working on, I've already got it all done.
Okay.
And you guys already approved it.
Okay. Chicken paperwork, that's going through as we speak. New business, we've talked to Moore, they should be good. The trash Bill brought up. The only thing I had on there is right now, I believe, we're at 10 bucks.
Yes, and we have a lower set than any city.
I know, I've called around to a few. And now that our rate is gonna go up per ton, is that correct, Bill? How much did that go up?
Well, Jamestown was 70, was it 78 a ton? And Weshick was 55 a ton or something like that.
Okay. And how many tons do you think it's a week?
Winter time, it's, anywhere is from two and a half to three and a half. Summer time, it gets to be more than that. I guess that's a five times.
Seventy-five hundred bucks a month, basically, extra. Um, Lauren and I had talked a little bit, we don't know how to approach that, if we should put it, to raise that, to go under just garbage, you know, on your statement, or if that should go in, what were you thinking, infrastructure, or?
You know, I think we're behind on all, you know, we haven't raised rates, I think the last time was back in, with the Sher project, when they went from thirty-eight to seventy-eight, or whatever it is, and we haven't done a thing since. I know we had a water increase about three years ago, it went from, what, three sixty to three eighty-five, or what is it we're paying, you know, all paying?
For water?
For water.
Oh, I don't know what we're all paying.
But anyway, that, you know, and I think, when, earlier when we had that issue, we thought we were losing water, and I was reading the big barn and the, down there every day, and I was thinking to myself, you know, we're running, we gotta be running just even keel at best. Personally, I think rather than dictate on one, we should look across the board, and just raise the rates, if, even if we do each one some, but if we're gonna aid by a infrastructure fee to help pay this and lower the assessment value, um, you know, we'll probably put a pretty healthy increase on this time, and, and I think from now on, there should be like an inflationary increase going on down there every year, rather than take these big heights and then nothing, and.
Well, look what happened in Napoleon, you know, they never raised anything, and then they jacked everything, six hundred percent one year, well, there should be a certain amount goes up every year, rather than catching everybody with their pants down. You know, that raised a lot of stink, they, you know, maybe like two hundred and sixty bucks or something just for garbage, and.
And the other thing that bothers me, and I'm guilty of it just much, I'm not gonna blame anybody. You know, when we had that breakdown in the tower back here, three years ago, or four, whatever it was, when that riser pipe ruptured, that was what, close to a hundred thousand? What we're doing is burning reserves, this town had reserves, and we're dwindling and dwindling and dwindling, and pretty soon we're gonna run out of reserves, then we got no more choices.
Right.
Yep, I agree with you. I don't mind being the lowest around, but I mind if we're not, if we're losing money, we just put six thousand bucks into our trash truck, and that came out of, like you said, reserves, basically. So that's where the problem lies, um, I don't think we're gonna make a decision this meeting, obviously, but it's something for you guys to think about.
I think so.
Maybe I can talk to some people and see what the legal way of, you know, if we can do that route, or if it has to be under garbage, you know, in water.
I know, and I don't remember how Harold Rotanga said it, but the one disadvantage with labeling it like garbage, uh, water, it's better to just have it a, a fee, an infrastructure fee, that way you can use it, the council can use it where they see fit. Really, if you put it straight to water, it should be used in water.
Right, yeah, I agree with that too, if this, one year we might have to steal out of this, you know, I agree.
Yeah.
But just, that being said too, it'd be nice for, when we talked about with the street project, raising infrastructure as well to help offset some assessments, it'd be nice if citizens can see where that's going to, you know, so they can at least say, okay, this is also going to the streets, you know, to help offset that, so.
Yeah, I guess it's just something to keep in mind, you guys, we're gonna have to come up with something pretty soon though.
Yeah, I think that needs to be, for the next meeting, sit down and try to figure out a, a rate that should, cause it should be inflation every year, but it, I mean, everything goes up.
Yeah, I agree.
Every person has to pay more for their bills, well, it's no different with the city, everything costs us more every year too.
Yeah, I, hopefully Jamestown treats us well, and we don't have an issue there, cause I had talked to numerous places, I've tried to get, um, estimates on waste management coming in now, and they won't even touch us, we're outside of Fargo and Bismarck's jurisdiction, I guess, if you will. Um, the next closest I've found is like Mo- Aberdeen's got one there, Molebridge's got a company that'll come up, that's what Napoleon's pursuing right now, but they're going to Bismarck, but we can't haul our truck to Bismarck every week, that's not gonna work, that's what we're gonna look at.
You're gonna be having a lot more maintenance fees.
Yeah, it's gonna be, so Jamestown, hopefully it'll work out.
Yeah.
They'll consult me.
Yeah, and I've heard that, is that, was that you that told me that, or maybe you did, Wishesick can actually try to buy that dump, so we could keep it open? They shook their head at four billion dollars, so I think that dump is officially done.
They ain't closing it, cause Larry, he's in mind.
Yeah.
Close it, cause they can make some words over there.
Okay, well, like you said, any more on that, so we can move on to that tax deed? Um, it's somewhere in your guys' paperwork, I've seen here, probably towards the back side of it. I don't know if you guys had a chance to read that?
No, I just did that one up today, I didn't email it to you.
Um, I don't know if you guys wanna, it's not a long read, if you guys wanna read that real quick, and, do we need a motion to?
This is where you're gonna have to tell me.
Okay.
I would assume if we're gonna purchase it for the thirty dollars, yeah.
Yeah, there is. Okay, is there any more discussion? And this is that property, that church down there that had that, we're already.
Bunch of money over that, so.
We already talked that over, so.
Motion to buy it for thirty bucks then?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to buy it.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and I'll just add to that, I talked to Marilyn, this was back when we went to the tax sale,
and, um, she did express interest in the property, so I haven't been, it was in redemption period, I, I told her I don't make any decisions, and I'll get back to her after the redemption period runs out, in case he does redeem it, and I'll talk to her again.
Okay, hopefully we get something worked out there, cause we're already enough went into that one, the way it sounds. All right.
But I think, you know, I, I think Bill should probably go down and plywood up the doors or something.
Yeah, let door back on.
Yeah, or screw the door off, or put the door on, put screws in.
Right. Reading down for home fair and pants.
Yeah. Do you guys have a chance to look at the water bills again? Looks like they're getting caught up, I think that's good.
Sure.
And the other one is supposed to, by Wednesday, have the other one paid and pulled, the last one there.
You crossed your name out?
Yeah, crossed your name out.
I shouldn't.
Well, you have to give a late fee sheet to them every month.
Right. I don't mind paying late fees, I do, I, I don't even know what day it is most of the time, so.
You guys have any concerns on anything there?
Don's got it figured out now, where she puts it, right where I have to see it, so.
Hate to see Hank back on there, cause I thought we had that one.
Um, he said on Wednesday he should, they should have it, but, I don't know, he doesn't wanna be in there very often.
Must be this last month's bill?
Yeah, he did pay fifty dollars of, he, yeah, one of them would be due the tenth here.
Okay.
So he was late on the other, and he did pay something on it, that's why he did not get a disconnect notice. And he says it'll be in there before the tenth, so all of them.
Nice to see that low again. Yeah, I guess, have to keep sending those notices, I guess, that's all we can do.
Well, looks a whole lot better than when I first got here.
All right, so. Could you guys get a chance to look at the bills, and this is the next thing? There you go.
It was so nice, it worked out, it was a little better. So that waste management, there's been nothing paid, Jamestown yet, I mean, that's kinda, so that's.
What, what did they say, do we have to sign a contract with them?
He said he was gonna send something out, but the last time I talked to him, he never mentioned anything about it, and I forgot to bring it up to him.
What's the name of the company?
Not that you just show up there.
It's just, that's the way it's, he made it sound, I mean, just show up.
Bill, what's the name of the company?
It's Jamestown, Jamestown landfill, yeah.
Can we put, Wishesick on the door of the truck, and then we never have to worry about it?
That's where I, that's where I haul the stuff that you don't put in the truck.
Any discussion on the bills, and now I move to approve.
Lauren, second?
I'll second.
Larry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Date and time of next meeting, Monday, April fifth, seven P M.
Should be March, shouldn't it?
No, we are March.
Not only are your papers lost, you might.
Now, isn't it going to start being daylight saving, or are we gonna start coming in later?
Easter Monday. Easter Monday.
We could do the following, we didn't have anything with more than we had to get done, ready to wait, I can call and see, but.
So do you April twelfth? Okay, any later than that.
Can we do a Tuesday? I mean, are we setting a tone on Mondays, I hate to get that far into the month.
I don't like. I.
Well, Tuesday's firemen's off.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I saw your minutes.
What's Wednesday?
What, Easter Monday, you think we're gonna make that on script?
I mean, it might not.
Church on Wednesday.
I guess it's up to you.
Easter, Easter Monday.
It doesn't matter, I mean.
Easter's on the fourth of April this year.
Cause I gotta work on that Monday, and it doesn't matter to me.
That doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, yeah, let's just keep, as long as it works for you guys.
Yeah, I'll have it.
Okay. Okay, where do we guys work at? Yeah, just keep it the same, and Monday, April fifth, at seven P M, or did you say something about daylight saving?
I was asking you, when does the daylight saving come, and when, then we start, not till later, I would assume, not.
Yeah, I think.
I think it's the next weekend.
So it's not till May or June, we switch back to?
March fourteenth.
It's gonna go to.
Sunday, March fourteenth.
Okay.
Cause we're not gonna switch clocks anymore, are we?
Oh, that's right, that is in March.
I say we have this one at seven, and just see what it does, you won't be out of feeling shit, you know?
If we are, it's gonna be a really scary year.
Eight's not gonna help you, is it?
No.
Keep it at seven, okay.
Keep it at seven for now, we can change it next week. All right, motion to adjourn. So, all those second? Larry, all those in favor?
Aye.
It was, so was second, you posted?
Uh, Larry was the second, okay.
So how do I go about getting a bill of permit from you guys, just for, for deciding a route?
Just come to, come near, Bill.
Huh?
Just come to us, and then we'll take it to the council next month. So what do you want it on?
What do I want it on?
Is it something you're gonna do right now, or are you doing it later?
No, I'm gonna do it eventually at some point, kind of, this year.
Okay.
So he told me you want.
All right.
Yeah, you come to me and Bill, and we'll, we'll get it all in, we'll give it to us later for a bit.
Block, whether that's out would be, we could do that later, and he would have to.
Yeah.
It'll either be, uh, meetings ended now?
A little bit the way he said, tonight.
What's that?
Are we done?
Yep.
Um, I have, uh.
We're gonna actually want to conclude, so, uh, I'm always nice, and, uh, working for the state.